Close your eyes for a moment. Imagine walking down a street in nineteen forties America. The buildings look the same, the air smells the same, children's laughter sounds the same, but one invisible line divides it all. It is the line of race. If you are white, you live on one side of the promise. If you are black, you live on the other side of the wall. This invisible wall existed in every corner of daily life. Two schools could stand just a few blocks apart, but the law said, "One for white children, one for black children." Two water fountains stood side by side, yet one bore the cruel sign, "Whites only." The buses had seats for everyone, but African Americans were forced to the back. It was a society that believed in the principle of "separate but equal." Yet in truth, everyone could see it wasn't equal at all. This was America in the mid twentieth century. The law, shaped by an earlier case called Plessy versus Ferguson, eighteen ninety-six, declared that segregation was perfectly legal as long as the facilities were equal. But there was a bitter irony here: facilities for black children were almost always underfunded, overcrowded, and neglected. It wasn't equality. It was inequality, painted over with legal words. And it is in this world, dear listener, that the story of Brown versus Board of Education begins. This is not only the story of one girl or one city, it is the story of a nation wrestling with its conscience. A story of how law can both chain people and set them free. Tonight, we begin that journey together. Let us drift deeper, slowly, into that world. Picture a young black child waking up on a cold Kansas morning. Outside, the wind is harsh, but harsher still is the walk to school. Because the school for black children is far away, across railroad tracks and muddy streets. Yet, just a few blocks from her home stands a well-kept, well-funded school. She cannot enter it. Why? Because of the color of her skin. This is what segregation looked like in daily life. It wasn't just about separate schools. It was about teaching children, from the very first day, that society ranked them differently. White children learned they belonged. Black children learned they were outsiders. The law gave this cruelty a false dignity. But change, dear listener, often begins quietly. In living rooms, in church basements, in whispered conversations late at night. In the nineteen forties, many African American parents began to ask, "Why must my child suffer this injustice? Why must my child walk so far when there is a school so close?" The National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, the NAACP, was already fighting in courts for equality. They had a brilliant lawyer leading them, Thurgood Marshall, a man who believed that the Constitution's promise of equality must finally be honored. Yet at this stage, the dream of ending segregation still seemed impossible. The law was against them. Public opinion was against them. Even the Supreme Court, in its history, had never dared to strike down segregation in schools. But the seed of resistance was planted. It is time to meet the young girl whose name would echo through history, Linda Brown. Linda was just an ordinary child living in Topeka, Kansas. She liked to play, laugh, and dream, just like any other girl. But her simple wish, to attend the school nearest to her home, would turn into a case that changed America. Her father, Oliver Brown, watched as his daughter had to walk long distances every day, past obstacles and dangers, to reach a rundown, segregated school. The unfairness weighed on him like a stone. One day, with courage in his heart, he joined with other parents and the NAACP to challenge the system. They were not wealthy. They were not powerful. But they carried the most powerful weapon of all, the truth that every child deserves equality. At night, when the lights dimmed and families rested, America itself seemed asleep, lulled into accepting segregation as normal. But beneath the surface, tension was building. Imagine the quiet hum of a nation that knows something is wrong, but has not yet admitted it. Imagine laws written in books that clash with the deeper law of conscience. This was the atmosphere in the years leading up to Brown versus Board of Education. And so, dear listener, as you drift further into calm reflection, hold this image: a little girl denied the school closest to her home. A father unwilling to stay silent. A group of lawyers preparing to challenge history: this is the beginning of our journey into one of the most important legal battles in history. As you rest, remember that even the calmest nights of injustice can give rise to the dawn of change. Close your eyes once more. Let the noise of the outside world soften, and imagine yourself stepping into the quiet streets of Topeka, Kansas, in the early nineteen fifties. The houses are modest, the streets wide and open. It is a small city, not the bustling capital of America, yet destined to become the center of a struggle that would touch millions of lives. Here, in this quiet place, lived a little girl named Linda Brown. A childhood in Topeka. Linda Brown was like so many other children. She had dreams of playing hopscotch, of running through the fields with her friends, of being close to her family and home. Her laughter could brighten the room, her innocence was the kind that only childhood can carry. Yet, her daily routine carried a burden far heavier than a child should bear. Each morning, Linda had to wake early, not for extra playtime, not for adventure, but for a long walk across town. She passed through cold winds, across railroad tracks, and along busy streets, simply to reach her school. Why? Because the nearby school, just a few blocks away, was reserved only for white children. Her parents saw the injustice. Her father, Oliver Brown, looked on with a heavy heart each morning as his daughter prepared for this journey. Imagine his pain, knowing that his little girl was being treated as less worthy, less valued, simply because of the color of her skin. The father's courage. Oliver Brown was not a wealthy man, nor a powerful politician. He was a welder for the Santa Fe Railroad and also served as an assistant pastor at his local church. He believed in faith, in family, and in fairness. Above all, he believed that his daughter deserved better. When the NAACP, the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, approached families in Topeka, asking if they would be willing to challenge segregation in schools, Oliver Brown stepped forward. His voice was steady, his conviction unshaken: "I will not stand by while my daughter is denied her rightful place." Though Linda's name would later headline the case, she was just one of many children involved. But Oliver's willingness to stand at the front gave the lawsuit its title, Brown versus Board of Education. Linda Brown was only a child, but her experience reflected the story of thousands. She once recalled how she wanted to go to Sumner Elementary School, the all-white school near her house. She could hear the sounds of children playing there. She could see its inviting building, so close and yet so far. But each day, she was reminded, "That place is not for you." This wasn't simply about distance. It was about dignity. For Linda, walking past that school was a silent daily lesson, that society placed her in a different category. That she was marked as separate, and therefore unequal. Yet Linda was resilient. She carried herself with grace, and though she could not yet know it, her name would be etched into the pages of American history. Linda's story was not unique. Across the United States, black children were denied access to better schools. They were placed in overcrowded classrooms, taught with outdated textbooks, and housed in buildings that lacked even the basic resources their white counterparts enjoyed. Imagine, dear listener, being a child who knows she is just as capable, just as eager to learn, but being told through laws and fences that she does not belong. The wound was deeper than mere inconvenience. It was a wound to the soul. When Linda later spoke as an adult about those days, her words carried both sadness and wisdom. She remembered how confusing it was to walk past the white school every day, wondering why she could not enter. Her simple desire, to be treated like every other child, was turned into a national question: Is America truly a land of equality? And so, Linda Brown's life, ordinary yet extraordinary, became the spark. Her footsteps on those long walks to school echoed across time, echoing even now as you hear this story. Tonight, let us remember: history is often changed not by kings or generals, but by children like Linda, whose everyday struggles reveal the truth of injustice. Her innocence, her simple wish for fairness, became the foundation of a case that shook the walls of America's highest court. This was chapter two, The Life of Linda Brown. In our next chapter, we will meet the lawyers of the NAACP, especially Thurgood Marshall, the brilliant mind who would carry Linda's story into the courtroom, and ultimately into history. For now, rest in the thought that one child's quiet journey to school became a nation's awakening. Close your eyes once again, dear listener. The year is nineteen fifty-one. The case of Linda Brown and other children is slowly moving forward. But to fight such a battle, ordinary parents needed extraordinary allies. And so, the story now shifts from the quiet streets of Topeka to the polished corridors of the courtroom, where words and ideas carried more power than weapons or armies. This is the story of the NAACP, the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, and the brilliant lawyer who would one day stand before the Supreme Court as its voice, Thurgood Marshall. The NAACP had been fighting for decades to secure equality for African Americans. Founded in nineteen oh nine, it was more than an organization, it was a movement of determined souls. They challenged segregation in schools, housing, transportation, and voting. They believed the law, which for so long had been used as a chain, could also become the key to freedom. In the early nineteen fifties, the NAACP had already won smaller victories. They had chipped away at segregation in graduate schools and law schools. But the Great Wall still stood, the segregation of children in primary and secondary education. Breaking this wall would require a case strong enough to pierce the very heart of Plessy versus Ferguson, the ruling that had long justified "separate but equal." Enter Thurgood Marshall. Thurgood Marshall was a man born for this moment. Tall, confident, with a commanding voice, he carried not only legal brilliance but also a deep sense of justice. Marshall himself had experienced the sting of segregation. As a young man, he had been denied admission to the University of Maryland Law School simply because of his race. That rejection burned within him like fire, and it pushed him to succeed all the more. He attended Howard University School of Law, where he was mentored by Charles Hamilton Houston, another brilliant legal strategist. Houston had once told his students, "A lawyer is either a social engineer or he is a parasite on society." Marshall took those words to heart. He would not just practice law, he would use law to engineer justice. Building the case. When Oliver Brown and other parents agreed to challenge school segregation, the NAACP Legal Defense Fund, led by Marshall, took up their cause. This was not just one case. Similar cases from Delaware, South Carolina, Virginia, and Washington DC were also in motion. Eventually, they would all be combined under one great name, Brown versus Board of Education. Marshall's team knew the challenge ahead. The Supreme Court had never overturned Plessy versus Ferguson. To convince the justices, they needed more than arguments. They needed evidence that segregation harmed children in ways that could not be denied. And so, Marshall and his team turned to social science. They presented studies, including the famous doll test conducted by psychologists Kenneth and Mamie Clark. In this experiment, black children were shown white dolls and black dolls and asked questions. Tragically, many of the children described the white dolls as "good" or "pretty," and the black dolls as "bad" or "ugly." This heartbreaking evidence showed that segregation planted seeds of inferiority in the hearts of children. It was not harmless separation, it was psychological harm, reinforced daily by law. Marshall's genius lay in combining the Constitution's promise of equality with the human reality of segregation's damage. He argued not only in terms of law, but in terms of humanity. Facing the challenge. Imagine the pressure, dear listener. Marshall stood before the Supreme Court, nine justices in black robes, staring down at him. On the other side, state lawyers defended segregation fiercely, claiming that separate schools were fine as long as they were equal. But Marshall's words cut deeper. He declared, "The only way to provide equal education is to provide the same education." He explained that separation, by its very nature, carried a message of inferiority. No matter how much money was spent, no matter how shiny the buildings, separate would never be equal. The man beyond the courtroom. Outside the courtroom, Marshall was warm, humorous, and approachable. He could laugh with colleagues, encourage young lawyers, and carry the weight of a people's hope with surprising ease. Yet beneath his charm was unshakable determination. Every case, every word he spoke, carried the voices of millions who had been silenced by segregation. He was not fighting only for Linda Brown. He was fighting for every child who ever looked at a school they could not enter, for every dreamer who had been told, "You are less." Closing the chapter. As you rest tonight, remember this: great change often begins with ordinary people, but it takes extraordinary leaders to carry their voices into the halls of power. Thurgood Marshall and the NAACP did not fight with weapons. They fought with words, with evidence, with courage. And soon, their battle would reach its climax before the highest court in the land. This was chapter three, The Lawyers and the NAACP. In the next chapter, we will step into the first courtroom battles in Kansas, where the Browns and other families faced their initial struggles before the case climbed its way to the Supreme Court. For now, let your thoughts drift gently, knowing that even in the darkest hours, there are always those who stand, speak, and fight for justice. Close your eyes once again. Imagine the simple courthouse in Topeka, Kansas. The benches are wooden, the air feels heavy with expectation, and in the corner, families sit quietly, holding the hands of their children. These were not rich families, not powerful elites, but ordinary parents who had dared to challenge a giant. This was the beginning of the first legal battle in the case of Brown versus Board of Education. The local courtroom. The courtroom was not as grand as the Supreme Court in Washington DC. There were no marble pillars or echoing chambers here. But to the families gathered, it felt just as important. Because here, for the very first time, their children's right to an equal education was being spoken aloud. The lawyers for the NAACP, led by Thurgood Marshall's team, stood ready to argue. They carried with them evidence, studies, and most importantly, the courage of parents who wanted a better life for their children. Across the aisle, the lawyers for the Topeka Board of Education prepared their defense. They argued calmly, confidently, and firmly that the law was on their side. After all, Plessy versus Ferguson had long declared that "separate but equal" was the rule of the land. The parents' testimony. One by one, the parents of black children shared their stories. They spoke of long walks through rain and snow, of the dangers their children faced crossing busy streets and railroad tracks, just to attend a distant, segregated school. They spoke of the humiliation their children endured, knowing that a better school was just around the corner, yet locked to them. Linda Brown's father, Oliver, told the judge about his daughter's journey. His voice was steady, but the weight of his words filled the room: "All I ask is that my child be treated the same as any other child. Nothing more, nothing less." It was not anger that moved the courtroom, but the quiet dignity of parents who simply wanted fairness. The board's defense. The Board of Education replied with a different story. Their lawyers pointed out that Topeka's segregated schools were relatively equal compared to other parts of the country. "Black schools in Topeka had good teachers," they said, "and decent facilities." They argued there was no harm in separation if both sides were funded equally. This was the shield of Plessy versus Ferguson. As long as two separate systems existed, and as long as the state claimed they were equal, segregation was considered legal. But beneath this polished argument lay a hidden truth: no matter the quality of the building or the textbooks, segregation itself carried a message of inferiority. And that message, as Marshall's team insisted, cut deeper than any statistic. The doll test arrives in Kansas. To strengthen their case, the NAACP introduced the psychological studies of Kenneth and Mamie Clark. In the Kansas courtroom, the results of the doll test were explained. Judges listened as experts described how young black children often chose white dolls as "good" and described dolls with their own skin color as "bad." This simple yet powerful study showed how segregation damaged the minds of children. It was not a question of brick and mortar, it was a question of dignity, identity, and the soul of a child, the judge's dilemma. The panel of judges in Kansas found themselves torn. On one hand, the parents' stories and the psychological studies revealed undeniable harm. On the other hand, the law, as written by the Supreme Court in Plessy, clearly allowed segregation. And so, the Kansas court reached a painful decision. The judges admitted that segregation had a negative effect on children. They recognized that separate schools harmed students emotionally and psychologically. Yet, bound by precedent, they ruled in favor of the Board of Education. Defeat with a doorway. To the families, the decision felt like defeat. Their children would still walk those long miles. They would still see the "whites only" sign. Justice, it seemed, had slipped away. But in another sense, this defeat was also a doorway. Because in their ruling, the Kansas judges wrote something important, they admitted that segregation was harmful. And that single admission, hidden in the lines of a legal opinion, gave Marshall and his team the opening they needed to take the case higher. The families appealed. The NAACP prepared for the greatest battle yet. The case was heading to the one place where the shadow of Plessy versus Ferguson could finally be challenged: the United States Supreme Court. Closing the chapter. As you rest tonight, remember this: even the greatest victories often begin with small defeats. The Kansas courtroom could not deliver justice, but it gave voice to truth. And truth, once spoken, does not die. It rises, slowly but surely, to the highest places. This was chapter four, The First Round, Kansas Court and Struggles. In our next chapter, we will journey into the Supreme Court itself, where nine justices in black robes would hear the case that would change America forever. For now, let your thoughts settle like the quiet gavel in that Kansas courtroom. The struggle is not over. It has only just begun. Close your eyes once more, dear listener. Picture Washington DC, nineteen fifty-three. The Supreme Court building stands tall, its white marble glistening in the morning sun. The steps, broad and imposing, are worn by decades of footsteps, just imagine how many have climbed them seeking justice, seeking answers, seeking change. Inside, the chamber is hushed, almost sacred. Nine justices sit in solemn robes. Outside, reporters and spectators wait, yet the real focus is on what will unfold within these walls. Entering the Supreme Court. Thurgood Marshall and his team enter the courtroom, carrying the weight of history. Every step, every breath, is measured, calm, yet purposeful. Across the aisle, state lawyers prepare their defenses. They will argue that "separate but equal" is legal, that segregation is permissible under the Constitution, and that schools should remain divided. But Marshall has a different story. One built not on conjecture, but on evidence, psychology, and morality. The arguments begin. Marshall's voice fills the room, steady and calm, yet firm. "Your honors, the doctrine of 'separate but equal' has failed. It has failed not just in practice, but in principle. Separate schools are inherently unequal. We are not asking for money, nor for buildings. We are asking for equality. We are asking for the recognition that every child, regardless of color, deserves the same opportunity to learn, to grow, and to dream." He presents the evidence carefully. The Clark's Doll Experiment is described once more. "Children," he explains, "internalize segregation, they learn to see themselves as inferior." The justices listen quietly, absorbing every word. The state's defense. The lawyers representing the state speak with polished confidence. They argue that schools in Kansas and other states are comparable. They insist that segregation is legal, and that local communities should maintain control over their school systems. Yet there is a subtle tension in their voices. Even they know the argument is fragile. Evidence cannot be ignored forever, and the stories of children like Linda Brown weigh heavily. Thurgood Marshall's strategy. Marshall's brilliance lies not only in law, but in framing the moral question. He shows the human cost. He describes the long walks, the humiliation, the classrooms overcrowded and underfunded. He asks the court to consider, "What is the meaning of equality if children are taught every day that they are second-class citizens?" He speaks slowly, deliberately, for every word matters. Each phrase is designed to linger, to plant a thought, to awaken the conscience of the justices. The tension in the courtroom. Imagine the silence as he speaks. The soft rustle of papers, the occasional cough, the sound of pen scratching notes. Each moment stretches, like a quiet drumbeat of history unfolding. Outside the courtroom, reporters write feverishly. Headlines will come later, but at this moment, nothing is final. Every word carries weight. Every pause invites reflection. Every glance between lawyers hints at the enormity of what is at stake. Closing the arguments. After hours of testimony, questions, and presentations, the arguments conclude. The justices retire to deliberate. The families, the lawyers, and even the spectators wait. They do not know what will happen, but they know that something unprecedented is in motion. History is being written, not in ink, but in words spoken, in evidence shown, in the courage of those who dared to challenge a nation's status quo. Closing the chapter. As you rest tonight, imagine the hush of the Supreme Court chamber. The weight of justice, the hopes of children, the courage of lawyers, all mingling in a moment that will define a nation. This was chapter five, The Supreme Court Arguments. In the next chapter, we will reveal the court's final decision, the moment when history itself took a turn, and the words that forever changed the lives of millions. For now, let your mind settle gently, knowing that justice, though slow, marches steadily toward truth. Close your eyes, dear listener, and picture the Supreme Court chamber once more. The justices have retired to deliberate, the doors closed, the world outside waiting with bated breath. The weight of history presses upon every chair, every marble, every silent corner. The question is simple in words but monumental in consequence: are segregated schools constitutional? Or is "separate but equal" a lie that harms the very children it touches? The deliberation. For months, the justices read briefs, examined evidence, and debated quietly behind closed doors. The psychological studies, the stories of Linda Brown and countless other children, the arguments presented by Thurgood Marshall, all of it was weighed with care. Chief Justice Earl Warren understood the magnitude of the decision. Not only would it affect Kansas, but every state in the Union. The ruling could either uphold a system that had long divided America or dismantle it entirely. Warren sought unanimity. He believed the court's authority would be strongest if all nine justices agreed. And so, he worked tirelessly, meeting with each justice, discussing each point, addressing doubts, and reminding them of the human consequences. The decision is announced. May seventeenth, nineteen fifty-four. The day dawned quietly, yet history was about to be rewritten. The Supreme Court convened, and Chief Justice Warren delivered the opinion. "We conclude that in the field of public education, the doctrine of 'separate but equal' has no place. Separate educational facilities are inherently unequal. Therefore, we hold that the plaintiffs and others similarly situated are, by reason of the segregation complained of, deprived of the equal protection of the laws guaranteed by the Fourteenth Amendment." The words echoed through the chamber. "Segregation, once justified by law, was now declared unconstitutional." The meaning of the ruling. Think about that for a moment. Those words were more than legal text. They were a declaration of human dignity. They told every child, of every color, that they were entitled to equal treatment. They told the nation that laws which demean or divide could not stand. It was not just a legal victory, it was a moral triumph. Children who had been taught inferiority could now dream of schools, opportunities, and futures equal to anyone else. Reactions across the nation. The ruling was met with both jubilation and resistance. Families who had waited for justice wept tears of relief. Teachers, lawyers, and activists celebrated. Across America, newspapers proclaimed that a new era had begun. Yet, in some parts of the country, opposition was fierce. Some states resisted, delaying integration and requiring further court orders. The road ahead would not be easy. But the Supreme Court had set a precedent. The law was clear, separate could never be equal. A nation awakened. The Brown v... Board of Education decision marked the start of the modern civil rights movement. It gave courage to those fighting for justice, equality, and human rights. It showed that the law, when wielded with truth and conscience, could challenge centuries of injustice. And for Linda Brown, the ruling meant she could finally attend the school near her home, walking with pride rather than exclusion. Her footsteps, once heavy with injustice, now carried the promise of change. Closing the chapter. As you rest tonight, imagine the quiet classroom slowly filling with children of all backgrounds, learning together, dreaming together, growing together. Think of the courage of parents, the brilliance of lawyers, and the wisdom of the justices who dared to see equality as a right, not a privilege. This was Chapter Six, The Final Decision, Nineteen Fifty-four Ruling Explained. In the next chapter, we will explore the reactions across America, from celebrations to protests, and see how this landmark ruling began to reshape society one step at a time. For now, let your mind drift gently, resting in the knowledge that justice, though often delayed, has the power to awaken a nation. Close your eyes, dear listener, and picture America in nineteen fifty-four. The Supreme Court has spoken, declaring that segregated schools are unconstitutional. Across the nation, people are waking up to a reality that has changed overnight. But change, as you know, is never easy, even when it is right. Joy and celebration. In many African-American communities, the decision sparked celebration. Families who had lived under the weight of segregation for generations wept tears of joy. Parents hugged their children, thinking of the schools that would finally be open to them. Teachers, lawyers, and activists felt a sense of vindication. Church bells rang in some towns, newspapers proclaimed "victory for justice", and quiet streets were filled with whispered stories of hope. It was, for many, a dream come true, a promise that the law now reflected the humanity of every child. Resistance and backlash. Yet, not everyone welcomed the change. In certain states, especially in the deep south, the ruling was met with fierce resistance. Some local governments enacted policies to delay integration, closed schools rather than comply, and attempted to maintain segregation by any means. People who had long believed in the status quo felt threatened. They argued that separate schools were tradition, that integration would disrupt society. And so, protests, petitions, and even threats began to rise, testing the courage of families ready to walk into previously forbidden classrooms. The courage of families. Despite resistance, African-American families showed immense courage. They enrolled their children in newly-integrated schools, often facing hostility, isolation, and even danger. Each small step into a formerly-all-white school was a powerful act of defiance and hope. Linda Brown herself, though a young girl, became a symbol of this courage. Her daily walk to school, once a burden, became a path of possibility. She represented the thousands of children across America whose dreams had been constrained by unfair laws, but who now had a chance to grow freely. The role of media. The media played a crucial role in spreading awareness. Newspapers, radio broadcasts, and early television reports brought images of celebrations and confrontations into homes across the nation. Families far from Topeka saw the impact of the ruling, feeling both inspired and challenged. The story of Brown versus Board of Education became more than a legal case, it became a national conversation about equality, morality, and the power of law to shape society. A nation in transition. This was a turning point for America. The ruling did not instantly end segregation or injustice, but it lit a spark. It inspired further activism, fueled the civil rights movement, and showed that the Constitution could be used as a tool for positive change. The journey of children walking into newly-integrated schools, of parents challenging longstanding norms, of communities grappling with change, these were the threads weaving the new fabric of American society, closing the chapter. As you rest tonight, imagine the streets of America filled with children of all colors, learning side by side, dreaming together. Remember the courage of the parents who dared to challenge injustice, the determination of lawyers like Thurgood Marshall, and the wisdom of justices who chose equality over tradition. This was Chapter Seven, Reactions Across America. In the final chapter, we will explore the legacy and long-term impact of Brown versus Board of Education, and see how one case continues to influence generations even today. For now, let your mind drift gently, reflecting on the power of truth and the courage it takes to change a nation. Courage, every decision to stand for what is right, builds a legacy that lasts far beyond a single lifetime. This was Chapter Eight, Legacy and Impact, Civil Rights Movement and Beyond. You have now journeyed from the quiet streets of Topeka to the halls of the Supreme Court, from the footsteps of a little girl to the awakening of a nation. Brown versus Board of Education is not just a case, it is a story of hope, courage, and the enduring power of equality. Rest now, dear listener, and let the lessons of history guide your dreams.